Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Buddy Dyer and I would like to welcome you to our Halloween meeting of the Orlando City Council. I see a lot of costumes out there, people coming as constituents or grant recipients or something like that. Okay, we are going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Reverend Tom McCloskey of the First United Methodist Church of Orlando, one of our neighbors just a couple blocks over and they have been downtown and serving downtown in the surrounding community for 130 years. Reverend McCloskey has served the Florida United Methodist Conference for 37 years but was just recently appointed in the last year, I guess?
Last four months, actually.
Last four months as a senior pastor at First United, welcome to Orlando. First United actively serves the homeless population through its work with Commissioner Stewart in the Christian Service Center, the Coalition for the Homeless and Family Promise, and it is one of five churches that Atlanta could tell you is one of the founders of I Dignity and I want to congratulate you pastor for, I understand you have joined the I Dignity Board of Directors.
I have, yes.
Commissioner Diamond is a member of that church, so if everybody would please stand, the invocation will be followed by the pledge led by District Five Commissioner Daisy Lyneham.
Before I begin my prayer, I just wanted to share a piece of information with you. In 1947, Peter Marshall, a poor Scottish immigrant, was appointed to be the chaplain of the United States Senate. And one of his remarks and thoughts after he accepted that responsibility of praying every day for that particular elected body, he noted a couple of things. First of all, he had to stop praying extemporaneously, he had to start writing his prayers, though he became much shorter and much more concise. He said one of the hardest things was, though, the fact that the dynamics of the room when the Senate was there, the shuffling of papers, that conversation that's going on as people are trying to move from the invocation to the really important business, was a real challenge for him. And finally, he said, he realized that the greatest thing he could do would be to offer God to send His wisdom upon God's servants. So I'd like us to begin our prayer with silence and if you'll pray with me. Loving all-knowing God, may each of us here today, may each across this city, this state, and this nation, recognize that on today and every day, making good choices for ourselves is simply not good enough. Instead, may we learn to seek justice, righteousness, wisdom, and freedom for all. May we find ways to become good stewards of our economic resources and of the creation which you have provided to us. And may we learn to see need, hear the cry of the needy, and respond as individuals and as a community. On this gathering, oh God, we pray this day, or I pray this day, that we may move beyond self-interest, ambition, to the greater good of all. May all who speak, speak words of wisdom, and may all that listen, hear what is said, and through those words, hear your will. We seek your guidance this day, that all decisions, all thoughts are acceptable in your sight. And Lord, we are grateful for the opportunity to be here, to have the freedom to gather, to have the freedom to choose, to believe as you call us to believe. And we're grateful for those men and women, in the uniform of the city of Orlando, in the uniform of our nation and our world. We pray and thank you for all their contributions, but we pray your continued presence with them, that they may have your safety. We pray that your kingdom will come, and we know that we can be a part of that happening. Amen.
Madam Clark, I'm going to call the meeting to order and would you make a, call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Lyneham?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, do you have a quorum?
Thank you. First order of business is consideration of minutes from the October 17th, 2011 workshop that generated you in city council meetings is a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart, in all favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Can I get somebody to move, put the map, the redistricting map against the front of the thing here? Add somebody, so the people that are over on that side until we need it can see the commission and we can see them. Thank you. Okay, let's take up the awards and presentations and we have one today, we'll be proclaiming October 29th through November 5th as the Week of the Family. Marcia, could you introduce this presentation?
Yes, I will, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an introduction of a program that you all have been participating in, or the city of Orlando has participated in for a number of years. The Week of the Family is an organization dedicated to strengthening family relationships through education, wholesome activities, fitness, and community service. This year, their theme, Can You Sleep When the Wind Blows, reflects on whether we are prepared in our community. And in a few minutes, Donna Parker, who chairs the committee, will come up and tell you just a little bit about that theme. They have a number of events that are planned, festivals, concerts, speakers, and various preparedness fairs. This will start on the 29th, in fact, it already started, and will end this coming Saturday. Since February, this committee that you're going to hear from in a few minutes has dedicated many, many volunteer hours to prepare the week-long activities of the Week of the Family and to honor the importance and the role that families play in our community. There are several members here and I'd like to just call their names and then ask Donna if you would come up for just a moment, and then Mayor Dyer if you would read the proclamation. Donna Parker is here, the committee chair. Debbie Pratt is here. Debbie, would you guys stand for just a minute so we can recognize you? Kathy Garrett is here. Linda Privat is here. Brian Craven is here. And then we have representing the city on the committee Patricia Newton from our office here as well. At this time, I'd like to ask Donna Parker if you would come up and greet the city council.
If I read the proc while she's coming up and then she can respond to that. Whereas the city of Orlando recognizes that families are the foundation on which our city is built and are the key to strengthening Orlando, and whereas the city of Orlando recognizes that strong families are at the core of strong neighborhoods and a source of hope, guidance, stability, and love for every generation, and whereas we appreciate the diversity of other families' traditions, and whereas everyone has a role to play in making families successful, and whereas Orlando's families are encouraged to take the opportunity during this week to recognize the importance of loving one another, the value of families, and the special connections that support and strengthen families year-round, and whereas during this week, we celebrate the inclusive spirit of American families throughout the city and applaud the commitment of those family members who encourage us to reach new heights. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, here do proclaim the Week of October 29th through November 5th, 2011, as Week of the Family in the city of Orlando.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I'd like to thank you on behalf of the committee and also all the Commissioners for your continued support of Week of the Family. I want you to know that because of the support of all the mayors and the central Florida community, we are now receiver proclamation from the governor, also recognizing this week for the state of Florida, for other communities to recognize families. And we even have, this year, we even had from Memphis, Tennessee, and from California, people that want to follow your example of supporting families. And I just want to thank you because it's made a huge difference and it makes it a neat community. I think myself, with 13 grandchildren, it's a great community to live in where your leaders place an importance and realize that strong families make a strong community. This year's theme on Can You Sleep When the Wind Blows, we're just trying to kind of follow the example of the Red Cross and the government where they want families to be prepared. We want the children to be prepared, to be able to live, be the leaders of the future. We want families to be prepared in case of emergencies and just a wide range of things and we've tried to have some events for that this week and hope all of you will take an opportunity to come out and maybe come to some of the events with your family. Thank you so much again, appreciate it.
Thank you. Handwrite into mayor's update. Last Monday, we could go today, we were at the DOP's annual function where I delivered the 2011 State of the Downtown address. We had about 400 attendees and we unveiled a new campaign called Why I Love Orlando. That stems from a book that Leslie Hillima recommended to me entitled For the Love of Cities by Peter Kagayama. I got that right, I've been practicing that a lot, it's hard to say. And Peter was also present and I had invited him to come talk about his premise and the prevalent theme of the concept is that when you love something, you cherish it, you'll fight for it, you'll do extraordinary things in the name of love, and most of the time you're thinking about people, pets, animate objects. And it can also however be associated with a place that we call home. And we wanted to start a discussion about the relationship between the people of Orlando and the city itself. And Peter's book already ranks Orlando in the top 20 most lovable cities in the country and I don't think I go a day that I don't have five or six people say to me, I love Orlando. I ask people a lot of times how long they've lived here and then how do they like it? And I'd say nine out of 10 times the response is, I love it, I love Orlando. So we want to focus on that and some of the things that we're doing here from the Amway Center to the Dr. Phillips revitalization of the fountain. We talked about the fact that downtown Orlando has 17,000 residents and about 75,000 people come to work here every day. It's our economic engine, it's our gathering place, it's our cultural hub. And one of the nice fun announcements we made was that we will now be having a fountain show at Lake Yola every night at 8:00 and 9:30 and it's four and a half minutes of jazz, lights, water, and a lot of fun. And we had, that very first night, there were about 1,000 people that came out and we didn't even do any advertising other than to announce that we were going to do it. So people love that fountain. We also discussed a couple new development projects. We'll be starting the demolition of the old Amway Arena in December of this year and we're going to do it in a green, sustainable way and reuse virtually everything there. We talked about how we had suggested that if we got Sunrail, that transit-oriented development would follow, and in fact, it has followed at virtually every station along the way, in particular, the four in the city of Orlando. Florida Hospital is reengineering their entire campus to focus on Sunrail. Orlando Health is going to add an additional 10,000 jobs or so during the next 10 years, specifically because of Sunrail. And then we have the proposed magic development across the street from the Amway Center. And on last Monday, Rita Development announced that they were going to move forward a $200 million development on the vacant lot between Link Central Station and the courthouse. And they said specifically, the reason that we are willing to make this investment today is because Sunrail will be coming and stopping at our front door and the type of project that we want is critically revolves around having mass transit. This today marks the end of Breast Cancer Awareness Month and we have had quite a month here in the city of Orlando, many, many events, from the Dragon Boat Festival to Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, which I was not there, I was addressing the Florida Democratic Convention at the time, but I understand there were over 20,000 people who braved the rain to be out and raise over $600,000. The city team actually did a great job hosting bake sales and raffles and raised $15,000 towards breast cancer research, so thank you city team on that. The majority of the people that are in chambers today, I think, are here because we are voting on 35 mayors matching grant projects and these grants are going to help neighborhood associations and schools and not-for-profits address neighborhood needs, engage our city's youth in activities that will keep them out of trouble and keep them productive. Would everybody that is part of an organization that's receiving a mayor's neighborhood matching grant, would you please stand up and let us recognize you? That's fantastic. Thank you all for the great work that you're doing, put that matching grant to good use. One other thing that I want to mention, we're approving two small business incentive agreements. One's a Business Assistance Program award to all green cleaners and another is a facade grant to Whitewood Mediterranean Grill and people continue to make great use of those grants. And we also, the city and the CVD have identified, the Creative Village Development Corporation have identified two EPA grants to pursue, which total about $600,000, so those applications are on today's consent agenda. So with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give our council members an opportunity to comment on items on the consent agenda and update you on items of interest from their district. We take turns on who goes first and rotate that and today it is District Five Commissioner Daisy Lyne.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer and council and welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I do want to piggyback on what the mayor said, if you love the city, I think you ought to join me and help and move all of those crazy signs on the right of way. So if you love us, keep us clean. Now for some community, and let me go on to the community matching grant, the CWDG grants that we named here, the mayor's matching grant, which is very important as you go from city to city, you want to see how these funds are spent. And we do a great job here in Orlando, so I want to congratulate those organizations in District Five and it's so many, I almost hate to name you, but I know Cotter Tabernacle is there, I know, of course, Matt Cow is downtown, that's everybody's, Mercy Drive, Moncho has gotten it through Jackie Perkins for years, the literacy program, the Orlando Daycare, which was one of my favorite, and Shallow Baptist Church where my family belonged forever, almost probably one of the founding fathers 100 and some years ago. Create at UCF that we worked with to get a technology program for Paramore. So it's just to name a few of those. So congratulations, it is a great way to get these funds out to the community and when you're spending them and you feel you're not supposed to have federal funds, you may want to give them back. So I just need you to know that these are community block grant funds and if you have any of these issues, like you don't want your social security or you don't want federal dollars, just let us know that you don't believe in it and we'll certainly find a great use for it. But my district doesn't have those issues, so thank you very, very, very much. Now to a few community events. Jones High School Homecoming Parade. Ah, it was just nice, it's just good to see the kids get out and have their parade and have their homecoming activities and game. But I like that little parade, it reminds me of the Martin Luther King and you kind of get in the mood, it's in the neighborhood, so I want to congratulate Jones High School on their king and queen, Mr. and Mrs. Jones High, and their court. I just want these kids who are doing such a good job in school and in the community to know that we do recognize them and we know what they're doing, so thank you. Then this past week, we did have Creative Village Jobs Forum, the mayor has already spoken to the demolition of the old arena. And for that particular piece on demolition, we had a community meeting earlier last week and this past week, October 25th, we had it just to deal with the people who can get a few of those jobs regarding demolition. And I believe we had over 100 people to show up. It lets you know the critical economy that we're in where so many people come just for some of the jobs that we were talking about. So I want to give out a shout out to Vernice Atkins Bradley, Veronica Anderson, and the Creative Village folks for the work they're doing to create these jobs. That's very important in the district I represent, so thank you very much. And Gennara for identifying these folks and Kevin Walsh who could come and make a difference in our community. Of course, it's always a great thank you for the Orlando Magic, who's been, in my opinion, a great partner for District Five, especially all the city. But since 2000, when we first start talking about a new event center or an arena, the Orlando Magic has stepped up its game like none other and for the cleanup on October 21st. That's my favorite thing to do, but unfortunately, I couldn't spend the day with them. But I want to say thanks to our staff and to the Orlando Magic family for the things they do in the community across Orlando and of course, all of metro Orlando, but I'm very partial because they're in District Five. Also Roger Cox, I never got a chance to say thank you for covering that manhole that I almost fall in every time I go out walking and this morning Kevin and I did our five miles in the rain. So every time I pass it, I just forget to say thank you and to Victor, I don't know how to say his last name, Galuski? I don't know how to say that one, sorry Victor.
Galuski is right. Galuski.
Oh, well, I did it phonetically, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And you know something, Alan, I'm not really into concerts and stuff and I'm not into a lot of stuff, but I like the idea of them because it means jobs. Everything I see, I see a job behind it. And my friends are here from Carolina and all around Orlando for Sugar Land, oh gosh, my relatives and poor Marcia went crazy over Josh Brogan. It's just wonderful to see all those people come downtown to use the event center, so let's keep that up. And thank you Frank for your work and helping me get some people in there. Thank you very much. And I know Save the Family, there was something regarding the family, the Week of the Family, but Reverend Holmes out of Tallahassee, who was a trustee for FAMU, has created national Save the Family. And on Friday, the 18th of November in Eatonville, we will have a luncheon. He is making this national, we are paying attention to families. Families are important and we really want to start focusing on that again. So those of you who have a chance in Florida Classic, join us at noon of the luncheon, we're going to have a walk and all of those things over in Eatonville for Save the Family Day, especially the guys with the Week of the Family. And also doing the Florida Classic. Now first of all, we have lots of space for the game and we want you to come out. But for the first time, I don't know whether Rodney is here or not, we're going to have a tennis tournament. If you play tennis, come and join us, buy your court, it's only $20. And we're hoping to have exhibition by FAMU and Bethune-Cookman University. I've had a tennis program in Paramore since 1994 and I love to teach kids to play tennis for free. They just show up and we teach them to play tennis, we give them their rackets and because this is a game you can play until you're very mature, unless your legs go, your knees and your arm, but we just want you to come out and have fun. Please join us and support the tennis. If you're a company and you want to buy court, come on, it's only $1,000 and it's to help support our city charities. I want to update you on a visit I made to the White House on Thursday, basically about jobs, but the one thing that really stood out to me was Mr. Copra, who is our technology geek in the White House. There is a program, and I know I'm going to buy it for my grandkids for Christmas, that helps elementary school kids and other kids. It's a game, it's a computer game, but as you achieve each level, you can literally master different levels of math, including calculus. So I'll have it on my website real soon, I just need you to know. And I need you to pay attention to the jobs bill. We need you to pay attention, jobs are important, people are hurting and they are in trouble. And we had an opportunity to meet with President Obama regarding the jobs bill, Secretary LaHood, Secretary Donovan, all of the secretaries, so many of them, including Valerie Jarrett. So just to make sure we understand, and I'm hoping I can next time give a better report because the weekend was so full of activities, I did not have a chance to do all my notes. So next council meeting, I will bring more information. Then Mayor Dyer and I had a great opportunity, I believe it was Friday, it's all about jobs. We did, the BBIF sponsored a Black Business Day over at Doubletree near Seaboard. And it was phenomenal to have the city of Orlando participate in it. There were 375 registered businesses and individuals. And Mayor Dyer, thank you for being there. It was one of the most unusual events I've attended in a long time, to see businesses that are hurting for business and opportunities. And the one word I could give them is that we can go beyond Orlando, the state of Florida, and we've got to look at the opportunity of trade. And that's just an opportunity. And I did mention, Mayor Dyer, that you've done quite a number of trade missions and we can go south, we can go to Europe or China or whatever, and I've done three in China myself. So we're really looking forward to the BBIF not only raising money for the Small Business Administration to $10 million to help you with loans, but you've got to look outside of the shores of the United States of America. So we want to help you with that. And of course, thanks to Dr. Dorsey for Saturday, I wasn't there long, I was late getting there and I left early. But Byron Brooks, our own CAO, is one of the greatest speakers you can ever have. I remember years ago, I asked Byron for a copy of his speech. I have used the tidbits for 13 years, he wasn't even with the city at the time, but he was a great speaker, I don't know where he is right now, to almost 100 kids who were graduating, there you are Byron, graduating from the, or to a different level in the Orlando Minority Golf Program through Dr. Dorsey. And Byron had the same theme is to look to the future, the sciences, and this morning for the workshop was about STEM and that's looking toward the sciences and math, so we all know where we're supposed to go in preparing our workforce for the future. But if you need a speaker, call Byron. He is good, I tell you, and for kids and for mature people. Then I got a call and an email from HGTV, which is my favorite TV program, you know, House Hunters, Yard Crashers, I don't know the Yard Crashers on that one, you know, all the crasher people, but they're doing Disney and they're doing Disney backyard stuff. They need two families with boys. I haven't been able to find one. If you have two boys, a couple of boys, and you want your backyard done like a Disney theme, that theme, let me know and we will send your names off to HGTV Disney Backyard People. That's not the name of it, but that's the name I just made up. So I mean, we really need you, I really want to show HGTV I'm one of their favorite and get two families, free. You don't pay anything to turn your backyard into a Disneyland, okay? If you've got two little kids and you want to mess up your backyard, let me know. I may even come over and help, I'll be one of your volunteers. You know how they show up and say, do you have somebody to work with you? If I'm in town, I'll come over and help you. So thank you very much for that. Now the agenda. I've already dealt with the matching grant and I want to say thanks to Leela who always makes sure we get that right, but one thing that Leela Allen asked me to do, Mayor, before leaving, Leela said, I heard that the CDB- Leela said, "I heard that the CDBG would be cut by 14%." Lord, I stood up and said, "I heard from our housing that the CDBG may be cut by 14%." Of course, they were like, "Well, you know, it could be worse." But Secretary Donovan told me that he's working with all his power to make sure it is not cut, and that CDBG and home stays intact. And if there is any reduction, Ms. Allen, that it would be a de minimis if it has to be that way. So I delivered your message to Secretary Donovan. And Mayor has already spoken to Agenda Item B10 regarding the facade grant, and of course, I mean, C6 and C7, the facade grant and the business assistance. So I want to thank everybody for listening to me. Go on, I'm normally not this long, but look, I talk about substance. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did Commissioner Ainge give you some of his time?
No, but you know what?
Yes, I did, Mayor.
You know what? I don't call everybody's name in the universe, and I only talk about things that everybody else want to hear.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to all the recipients for the Mayor's 2011-2012 Mayor's Matching Grants projects. And we know that you're going to do a great job because this is all about our youth and about our children. And then Item J1 on our agenda, the meeting minutes of the Greater Orlando Aviation Authority Board. In their July 20th minutes, they recognize Mayor Carlton Langford by renaming the board room at the Aviation Authority Carlton Langford Boardroom. And this is very appropriate since Mayor Langford, through his vision and his dedication, helped start the Orlando International Airport. So my congratulations to the Langford family and also to the Orlando International Airport. Now, right into community effort, specifically, I'd like to congratulate Board Chair Ed Carson and President and CEO Vivian Bryan of the Orlando Housing Authority. They celebrated their 2011 Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon, which was held this past Thursday, October 20th, at 3225 North Hillside Avenue in Orlando. They recognized the dedicated individuals who have contributed time and resources to enhance the lives of the Orlando Housing Authority residents, and also recognized those residents themselves that did so much to help improve the housing authority. So again, congratulations to President and CEO Vivian Bryan and Board Chair Ed Carson. And also Commissioner Patty Sheehan was there, as well as Commissioner Ortiz's aide, Anna, was there on hand. And also on Thursday, October 20th, the Orlando Neighborhood Improvement Corporation's Onyx Lights On After School Project was done at the Boca Club Apartments there at CR Smith Street in Orlando. Orlando Fire Department Chief Miller, Fire Station Seven was on hand. The kids really enjoyed going through the fire truck and putting on some of the helmets and that kind of thing of the firefighters. And it was a great event for our kids in the neighborhoods. And then on Friday, October 21st, Nephron Pharmaceuticals, a company in District Six in the City of Orlando, high-wage job opportunities right here in the city, did their topping-off celebration for their Haidee Warehouse, which is located on 5249 LB MacLeod Road here in the City of Orlando. This is a 115-feet-tall building that's completed automated warehouse that will be handling pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical products that are sent internationally and throughout the world. Mayor Dyer, along with myself, and I presented the proclamation on behalf of the City of Orlando with Nephron Pharmaceuticals. Frank Billingsley, Mayor's Chief of Staff, was on hand, as well as Brooke Bonnet, Director of Economic Development. And Elder Mike Bynum represented the Hope Church, where Bishop Allan Tiddy Wiggins is the senior pastor. This was a great event. Lou Kennedy, the President of Nephron Pharmaceuticals, was on hand. She was very moved by the City of Orlando's participation in recognizing them and being there to support and celebrate with them their topping-off celebration. And then coming up, November 16th, is the Seniors Thanksgiving Luncheon, provided by myself and also Mayor Buddy Dyer is going to be there to assist me, along with the staff of the L. Claudia Allen Center. This is our senior center where we recognize and honor our seniors who have contributed a lifetime of love and care to their families and our community. This is a seniors' Thanksgiving Luncheon that we give annually, that we will be serving lunch to our seniors from 11:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and this will take place on November 16th, Wednesday, and it will be at the L. Claudia Allen Center, 1840 Mabel Butler Avenue. And we're asking all seniors, if you would, or families of seniors, and you do plan to attend, if you would, please RSVP by Friday, November 4th. You may call the Claudia Allen Center at 407-521-3663. Our sponsors are Universal Orlando, SeaWorld Parks and Entertainment, and the Han Foundation, also helping us with this particular program. And a week after that, I cordially invite our seniors and families to District Six Seniors Thanksgiving Concert. And this is a free concert. This is our second annual event. It will be held Friday, November 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's going to be at the L. Bethel Temple of Orlando, 3,000 Bruton Boulevard. And we're going to feature Luther Barnes and the Sunset Jubilaires. They are an international group. Helen Miller is also a Stella Award winner, and local artists, the Turner Brothers, and Walicia Creighton. This is a free family concert to celebrate our seniors who have dedicated their lives for the benefit of our community. I will also be giving some awards to our seniors, community awards to our seniors who have been so faithful within District Six. Universal Orlando is also a sponsor, SeaWorld, Bright House, and WellCare. We are looking for more sponsors, so you're welcome to come and partake in this event. And the last thing that I have is I am co-hosting the first-ever, the first-ever Washington Shores Christmas Parade with First Lady Deborah Wiggins, and she is the organizer and President of the Washington Shores Business Group. And also with the Village of Orlando, we thank you for your support, too, for this parade. This is going to be a great event. First Lady Deborah Wiggins wanted to do this last year, and so we're just continually staying on this, and it will happen this year. So this will be the first-ever Washington Shores Christmas Parade right here in the City of Orlando. So thank you, Mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Move to District One. Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to comment on a few things on the consent agenda and then talk about a couple of other items that are, that are happening. First of all, on the consent agenda, I'd like to congratulate all the groups that have worked so hard to put together, all the efforts they need to put together to do the matching grants. I think for all of you that are here, it reflects a lot of time and effort and planning. And I think it's really, really good to see all that community involvement, to see people getting involved and making, making the community better, whether it's their neighborhood, whether it's schools, whether it's nonprofits, and I think it's a really good thing. And I want to congratulate you and, and call you out for that. Also on the agenda, Item B11, I'm glad to see that the Southwest, Southwest Police Station is going to be getting a permanent home. Commissioner Ainge, I'm surprised you didn't mention anything about it. I know you've been a champion of that for a long time, but I think it's good.
It's District Five.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner.
Well, it's, it's a good thing, no matter where it is. We need to, we need to keep our, our city and our neighborhood safe, that's for sure. Item G2, that's a, that's a change in the lease agreement with the Orlando Predators for their use of the new arena. I reviewed this information that I got, and basically, it's going to result in the loss of about $100,000 a year to the city of the amount the city is getting for the Predators' use. And I understand that the economy is hard right now, and perhaps we'd want to look at something that might just be a temporary thing. But this is a four-year deal. Over the course of the four years, it would be about $400,000. And I just, I disagree with that. That's a big cut from what we're getting, and I'm going to vote no on that one. On the rest of the agenda, I'm fine with it. A couple other announcements I want to make, excuse me, a couple of thank yous. I want to thank the Science Center. They did a very nice job today. And really thank them more for all the good work they've been doing to, to make the operations of the Science Center better, to get their, to do as well as they can financially, but also reach out to the community and get more, more folks in the community into the Science Center, and reaching out and working on their mission of encouraging people, and kids especially, to get more interested in science and technology and engineering areas. On the staff, I wanted to call out the, now that two people have said his name, Vic Galuski and Rick Howard from Public Works, and their good work. They do a good job day-to-day, but also their efforts recently in the Bryn Mar neighborhood to, to help make a lift station area that, that is, that the city operates with OUC, make it more attractive and safer. And I think that's the kind of thing that people appreciate, and I just wanted to express my thanks to them for that. Also, I see a, a lot of people from the downtown south area out in the audience tonight, or today, and I want to thank them and the staff. They had a very successful meeting a few weeks ago at City Hall, talking about business opportunities. I want to thank everybody for, for doing a good job with that, that meeting. And then lastly, I want to, speaking of homecoming, I think Commissioner Lyne mentioned one of our city schools. I want to mention another one and congratulate Boone High School on their homecoming victory last, last Thursday night, and wish them the best success in the rest of the season. That's all I have, Mayor.
On to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, let me start by congratulating you on a State of the Downtown address. I thought it was a very good address and a great message. Also, want to congratulate the recipients of the Mayor's Matching Grant. Congratulations. We had our first District Two Community Fall Festival on Friday, October 21st. The Jackson Middle School track field, and it was a big success. Over 200 residents attended. We had a great time. I want to thank Commissioner Stewart for attending. Deputy Chief Odell, that came up on behalf of our chief. I also want to congratulate and give special thanks to Orlando Federal Credit Union, Orlando Utilities Commission, and BBNT for donating towards the event. And special thanks to the Ola staff, community, communication and community involvement, volunteers of the OPD COP program, and OPD SWAT team, and the firefighters. They did a great job. Those kids, couldn't have enough of them, so it's always good to see those kids all excited. I'd like to express my gratitude to Ms. Rosalina Stober, Vice President of the HBIF, and to Mr. Gary Ross, Executive Director of the National Entrepreneur Center for their hospitality given to the Summer Business Partnership during their visit to their center on October 20th. They got a lot of information about these two great institutions we have in the city, hopefully helping our businesses in the southeast section of the city. Saturday, October 22nd, was a very busy day for, for me. On behalf of the City of Orlando, I received from Fox Sports Florida a $50,000 check for the After School All-Stars Program, and that was great because this is one of the most hectic, busiest programs we have in the city, keeping our kids very occupied. And of course, that translates to diminishing crime, to getting these kids involved, even being more active in school and whatnot. So I would like to congratulate Mr. Tyler Chandler, who is doing an exceptional work with the After School All-Stars Program, Mr. Ray Crump, Mr. Greg Hahn, and staff for planning a great event. I would also like to give special thanks to OFD District Chief Anibal Sias. Did a great job. Fire Lieutenant Frank Rodriguez and firefighters Luis Urra for preparing food, food for the children and the parents. I really appreciate their assistance. Food was great, as usual. In the afternoon, I attended the Health Fair sponsored by the Metro Orlando Hispanic Cert, a very active group in the southeast community, at the Hoffner Library. And on the same evening, I also attended 12th Annual Gowns and Guayabera Scholarship Fund Gala, and I want to thank Ms. Lisette Valerino for their hospitality and for their great event. This particular gala collects funds to help kids, especially students who are going to college, so it's a great scholarship. And they, they do a lot for our community. That's, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner, move to District Three. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations on the State of Downtown. That was a great event. I thought it was a wonderful theme. The, let me cover a couple of things that are coming up. First is Happy Halloween. I share that because there's going to be a lot of kids out in the street tonight, a lot of kids putting out some safety tips through the, my office, as well as OPD. So those of you out there, as I used to say on the old Hill Street Blues, y'all be safe out there. Tomorrow, the Edgewater High School will be going through their rededication ceremony on our new campus. It's, it'll be tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, over at, at the new campus. So please join us if you'd like. We'd love to have you there. Coming up on some other items in the community, Audubon Park Elementary Fall Festival is this Saturday from 2:00 to 6:00 over on their campus over in Baldwin Park. This Saturday evening from, at 7:00 on November 5th, is Movies in the Park at Dartmouth Park in College Park, sponsored by the College Park Neighborhood Association. Come enjoy Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. I think it's the original version, if that's not correct. It's just great. We've been trying to really push Neighborhood Watch in the Rosemont community area, so if you are listening or you're part of the group here, and we were, are trying to, to recruit Neighborhood Watch block captains for the Rosemont area. It includes Rosemont Signal Hill, Rosemont North, all that area over there. Please come join us. We'll have a recruiting meeting on this, I guess, Thursday night, the 3rd, over at the Rosemont Community Center. And speaking of that, the Orlando Metropolitan Christian Center and Pastor Darwin Randolph had an opportunity to recognize one of our workers from, in the city, one of the great workers that we have, Brenda Scott, who runs our Rosemont Community Center. Had a chance to recognize her yesterday and, and just, she had a chance to be honored for the work that she has done over there. It's been wonderful. Pastor Randolph's got a new church that's about three months old, serving that area of that community. Lou Gardens will be having our birthday celebration next week. Y'all come out and join us. I think it's next Monday. We'll have a chance to go and, and celebrate, I guess, 60 years, right? 60 years of, of, of a great community amenity. The Camaraderie Foundation has a golf tournament this weekend. I share this because it's a wonderful opportunity to help those soldiers. And as we embark upon November, I'd like to remind, remember that it's not only a great time to be thanks, to celebrate Thanksgiving for our country, but also to celebrate specifically those veterans who have fought and have died and are living for our country. They're having a special event for, to help raise money to those who, who need assistance when they get back into, into the country. And it's going to be this Friday, November 4th, at Dubstrad. And of course, Lou Gardens has the, their Friday night, date night's coming up. It's a Sherlock Holmes event. Let me share a couple of things. Let me share a couple of things real quickly. On the agenda, I want to say thank you to those in the matching grant. Let me just kind of mention them real briefly, because one of them I'm really excited about is our new community garden, so thank you very much for the work that you're doing. Audubon Park Covenant Church has got some really neat stuff going on, the College Park Neighborhood Association with the College Park Community Garden, thank you for your work. Commissioner Sheehan, thank you for your inspiration to have that work. I appreciate the work that you've, the groundwork you've done inside the city about that. Downtown College Park Partnership, the Florida Opera Theater, the International Fringe Festival, and of course, Lavenhoe Village. All of them are great projects, and Mayor, I appreciate you continuing to keep this as part of our agenda. In addition to that, on I-2 today, we will be agreeing or sign off on an agreement between us and Orange County on the Dinkie Line Trail. It's the intersection we'll be working on over at Virginia. I appreciate the work that Jeff Arms has done, and the work that we will have. It'll be a wonderful new amenity that we'll be able to share in the next few months. And that's all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm not forgetting you, Commissioner Sheehan.
It's okay.
We'll move to District 4, Commissioner Sheehan.
It's almost over, y'all. And I'll be brief, I always am. I only talk when I have something to say. On the breast cancer walk this last weekend, it was $611,000 that was raised, and want to shout out to my sheros Rebecca Sutton and Sarah Kelly for their inspiration and all the hard work they did to help raise all that money for treatment and research. On item A-7, the Mayor's Neighborhood Matching Grants, I want to shout out to some of the District 4 organizations, the Fringe Festival, Kids Fringe, Mills 50 Main Street, Banners and Art Boxes, real proud of those, Downtown South Banners, Urban Think Foundation, After-School Homework Room, so really proud of folks who either have their business in District 4 or interest in District 4 for doing that amount of community service. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheehan. Let's see, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Rings. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? And so the motion carries. I'm going to give everybody that would like to escape, that a second to do that.
They include us? Don't wait, he has to stay. Make Wayne stay. We only have James Q. We have lots of...
All right, we have no CRA, we have no OPEB, no new business, so that brings us to hearings, ordinances, on second reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the Growth Management Plan to amend Policies 1.5.2 and 2.1.6 of the future land use element, providing for severability and an effective date.
Move approved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there only one for the public to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to elections, amending Section 4-1, Chapter 2, Orlando City Charter, to redesignate the boundaries of the city's six commission districts, amending provisions relating to redistricting to eliminate... I just lost it.
Dee, you were doing so good.
I know, and I had it here. Superfluous language to provide greater clarity and to conform to existing law, providing a schedule of implementation, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Rings. We're going to recognize Wayne and the other members of the Redistricting Advisory Board and our staff after we vote on this. We had extensive public testimony over the course of about four months, I guess, resulting in the map that the RAB brought forward. There were two minor adjustments to your work that were made by a couple of commissioners last week, but very minor modifications, so you have done yeoman's work, put in a lot of time on it, and it has resulted in a very good process and a very good fair distribution in the map. So I appreciate the integrity that you used, the amount of time that you used, and the thoughtfulness that was put into drawing these maps. With that, let's see, we've got a motion and a second. Let me, Commissioner, how about if I go ahead and see if there's any public testimony, then we'll do discussion. So I do have one card. Yeah, if we could, hey Kevin, I know you're multi-talented, could you move our sign back up here?
Andy's true.
Or our map? And we do have one request to testify, James Q. Mitchell. Saw him in here before.
He's right over there.
Oh, there he is.
Good evening. I am James Q. Mitchell, Post Office Box 555003 in Orlando. I thought you were trying to cover me up.
No, no, I moved out so you could see, and we could see you.
That's my favorite seat. I am very happy to say that I am in accord with the new map. It is acceptable to us, and I guess my colleagues couldn't make it because they had too much partying going on with the Democrats this past weekend. One got a cold, and I didn't go, so I'm well. So I am happy to say that to the members here, that I am in accord with the new plan. I did express my opposition to the old plan, so thank you. Two weeks ago, I attended the Creative Village Update, and I took this little flyer home, and I had a chance to study it, and I was wondering, did the new project extend back to Westmoreland?
No, it doesn't.
Well, the flyer is wrong then. But I would like to say that the annexation project that I hope we would engage in the future for the city of Orlando would bring in those island areas that need to be annexed. It's been put on the back burner for years and years and years. We've had all kinds of city commissioners, county commissioners, and they've failed to annex those areas. In fact, I think if we don't get it done, I'll annex my little property on Riley Street to become part of the city of Orlando.
Why haven't you done that already?
Well, I will do it now.
All right, welcome in.
But I'm going to give you a chance to annex me first.
That, well, that's not the way it works. You can voluntarily annex in, which is the way we like people to do it, or we can hold an election to see whether an area wants to annex in or not. So that's what happened with Tangelo Park. If I could wave my magic wand and take in all of those, I don't have one, by the way, but if I could and take in all of those enclaves, I'd do that in a heartbeat.
Well, you have to use a different carrot, and I think if you did offer a much better carrot, I think we could annex those areas. But it appears that if you're providing a lot of the city services, you may as well get the taxes for it. You may as well. And I'm a taxpayer of about six pieces of property, and one is in the unincorporated area, so I would like to get that piece of property.
We can sign you up today.
I don't want you to work that fast, I want you to work fast, or all of the other properties.
Not in my backyard.
That's right.
Is it contiguous, James Q.?
Yes.
Okay.
Right across the street.
Okay, then you're in.
And it's a shame that you have one street on one end is in the city, and on the other end is in the county. We shouldn't have that. And it is an island, too, what makes it bad. So in closing, I would like to again express my thank you to the Redistricting Committee, and may I, I'll be waiting, I'm a retired citizen. You don't have to pay me, so just let me know when you're ready to work.
Why don't you do me one other favor, then?
Yes.
Since we're trading off here. Why don't you walk over to the county at their next commission meeting, at their general appearance, and suggest to them that they not fight the city on annexations that would make sense in terms of who can provide the services most efficiently?
Well, may I, I will mention that when we tackle them on the redistricting.
Perfect.
I'm happy to say that you all are the first to work with us in coming up with a plan that is acceptable to us. So just tell them that I'm coming. The team is coming, and we are going to fight the school board, too. They are hard to crack. They're nuts, it's hard to crack. But again, thank you, and are there any questions?
I think you...
I'm going to respond to you in a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
I'm trying to get a question.
No, we don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
But I think, Wayne, that does point out what a great job you guys have done, so thank you. Even the critics are saying it's pretty good now, right?
Right. That's right. I just wanted, my teammates, I just wanted them to know, rain or snow, I'm here to carry the ball for them.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any other appearance requests, Dee, is that right? Okay, then I'll entertain discussion among commissioners. Commissioner Lyman?
Mayor, James Q., I have to admit, of your team, I prefer hearing from you. Let the rest of them stay home, sit. At least we need to have some logic, and annexation is a real possibility, and this team, our board, did a great job. What just happened last week, our last council meeting, was very minor in terms of what happened, and it had already been proposed. It's just that we didn't work it out, that's all. So that was so minor, it just didn't take a whole lot of effort. So I want to say a great thank you to all of your work, especially Jacqueline, Wayne, and Bishop Wiggins, because of that committee for District 5 and 6. But Mayor, I just written, let's ask James Q. to go over to the county and deal with them over there, because it's not an issue here. We've been working on this for many years. But again, on Friday, Commissioner Tiffany Moore, Russell, and I, while on the panel, again discussed our annexation, and I've gone over this with Mr. Mitchell, the area we have been talking about since Commissioner Butler was a part of it. And now Commissioner Moore wants something from us. Linda, let's talk. She wants something I think we can trade off on, if we get the part I need over in whatever that neighborhood, I can't remember, Roosevelt or whatever, Ferguson. It's a great community that we have worked on. We had met with them through Public Works. We've done this, I think Alan was not even the Public Works Director at the time, so I agree with him that this needs to be done. And all the enclaves, I know this morning in the rain, Kevin made me go walking, well, not quite, Kevin, I'm sorry, I have to tell the chief how you treat me. But we went walking our five miles that we normally do our district work, and during that walk, I did call the county about a piece of property less than a mile from my house, that's one of those enclaves he's talking about, that is so sad, but Michael Rose, Michael, Mike Rose, is so good about what he does, that I don't call the county, I simply call Mac Rose when it's a code enforcement issue, and he is very, very capable of coordinating with the county. We heard you, Mr. Mitchell, on the annexation. The rest of it was kind of poppycock to me. It didn't, I mean, we'd already worked that out, so the Redistricting Advisory Board was so good, and worked with the commissioners so well in our community, that I can't say enough how much I appreciate your help, how thankful I am, and that it really only required a little tweaking. So Mayor, I will be asking, Linda, we are on to get this annexation on James Q. property. We will start tomorrow. I don't care what he says, we're going to hold his feet to the fire, we're going to annex that little lot, and then we'll go after the big neighborhoods, and he knows exactly where it is, and it's just something we've worked on before. This is not new, it's just that getting it done, Mayor, is not going to be the easiest thing, because if it were easy, it would have been done by now. Thank you very much.
And Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you. Mayor, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Cleve, he's been working the last couple of weeks and had a chance to miss our, didn't we have a chance to recognize everybody? So Wayne, thank you for your work, Cleve, thank you for your work, and thank you for coming up from South Florida to be here for this. I appreciate that. This is a good example of how I think we, as a community, can respond, and I think it sets a precedence for those around us about how you can engage the community, but you can still come up with consensus. And so, Wayne, much the same, still with your leadership, I appreciate your leadership on that, and I just want to say thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, way to go, RAB. Just, hey, James. And James Q., before we leave that other subject, just so you know, the biggest fight I ever had with Mayor Caratti was over annexation of property that fell within the joint planning agreement area that was supposed to be annexed without any opposition, but it was. All right, but on to better, Wayne, you were around for that, as I recall. So the RAB, the Redistricting Advisory Committee, had more than two dozen meetings over a period of about 12 weeks, and this is the result, which is the map over here, and as we just discussed, it has turned out to have been a very good effort. The group was made up of nine citizen volunteers. I appointed three, including the chairman and each of the district commissioners, appointed one, making the total of nine, and then I think we did a pretty good job of balancing, making sure that the committee looks like our community. So we had three Latinos, three African-Americans, three Caucasians, five males, and four females. It'd be harder to balance it better than that, I think, and one man of the cloth. They put together a number of redistricting plans and then brought us one, which is what we wanted, not two, not three, but one. As has been mentioned, we did just some very minor tweaking to it, and we now have a map that people can know where their districts are and be prepared to run for in the spring. And what I'd like to do is come down and present you each with a token of our appreciation. And Dee, I'm going to let you, I think you're calling the names right.
This is Mayor. Chairman Wayne Bridge.
Vice Chair Jacqueline Barr.
Please, please, who's going to speak?
No, no, no. I guess you've been muted, you know.
Stephanie Al. Bishop Allen T.D. Wiggins. Tanya Wilder. Angel Cologne is not in attendance. John Cabrera was unable to attend, and Sarah Kelly was unable to attend.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Thank you.
Linda Rhinesmith. Mike Mills. Susan Harris. Walter Hawkins. Trinity Tesler. Maria Iftikhar. Beverly Willis. And Cindy Sanford, who was unable to attend.
Let's move to ordinances on first reading, number one.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida changing the zoning designation from AC-3/SP to 0-1/SP on certain real property generally located north of the Tangilo Park neighborhood, south of the Festival Bay Mall, east of the International Drive Corridor, and west of Crown Point Industrial Park and the Florida Turnpike, comprised of 6.78 acres, more or less, amending the city's official zoning map as initiated by the property owner, providing for severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ing, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance is first reading, number two. Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the city's growth management plan by changing the future land use map designation on property generally located north of Columbia Street, south of Gore Street, east of Lucerne Terrace, and west of South Orange Avenue, and comprised of about 0.53 acres, from urban activity center to office medium intensity, directing amendment of the city's official future land use map series, providing for severability, correction of Scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
No motions.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? And so the motion carries. That concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today.